Thursday, January 20th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Can we please have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support? Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Mayor Verkaman.
Here.
City Manager Tatman.
Here.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public comment. We're going to do a... Joe, question? Public comment? No, I'm gonna... We're gonna do a quick presentation first. All right. Fire Chief Joe Schlenkster.
Hi.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Sergeant Brad Tean. As we all know, this is Chief Schlenkster with Marine City Area Fire Authority. We would like to take this time to present a word to a scout from our local troop, Troop 296. The Marine City Area Fire Authority has established a history with the local scout group of teaching their CPR classes. These classes are taught by us, to the troop, and the general public as well. We do offer public classes with the hopes that if faced with an emergency, the trained individuals will react and provide lifesaving measures. This hope became a reality when Scout Jeremy Hubbard was in school during his fourth period. Jeremy had shared with us that he was in class when he noticed his friend, who was chewing gum, began to look like he was trying to cough. Jeremy then noticed his friend start to put his hands up to his neck, which is what we call the universal sign of choking. Jeremy acted quickly and performed a Heimlich maneuver, dislodging the gum from his friend's airway and thus preventing his friend from going unresponsive and/or into cardiac arrest. Jeremy acted in a way that we feel that the Marine City Area Fire Authority is deserving of a lifesaving award. Jeremy has told us he does not feel that this is quite a huge deal. They perform these actions to which we rebut. I'm a paramedic. I've been in EMS for eight years, and it's a pretty significant deal. Jeremy's actions were nothing short of that of a hero. His actions were quick and resulted in the preservation of human life. And with that, on behalf of the Marine City Area Fire Authority, Chief Schlenkster and I, we would like to present Scout Jeremy Hubbard with this lifesaving award.
Here, here.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Well deserved.
Great job.
Okay, Joe, go ahead.
I'm Joe Moran. On behalf of the work group that's come together to figure out what to do with city-owned properties, I'd just like to say we held our first meeting this afternoon. We had a very good turnout. We had some very good suggestions and comments from citizens in attendance. And the work group is continuing. We will have another meeting on February the 2nd at 5:30. And we'd love anyone that was here tonight, come back. Or if you haven't been and you have some ideas of what we might do with 300 Broadway and 303 Water Street, we'd like you to come to share that with us. Thank you.
Anyone else? Public comment? Go ahead. You need to shut that door.
Hi, Marine City family. My name is Shiri Toco. I am a new face around here in the business world, but not in the community. I'm a local person. I've led the community for almost decade now. But I'm here because we... I work for Autism Systems, and we just opened up a new location. It's actually right down the street from you guys on at 439 South Parker Street. What we do is we work with kids that have autism. If you are a family that has a child that is struggling or if you're a family that feels like you have a child that needs to be evaluated, we greatly encourage you guys to contact us. I have left business cards at the city office, as well as I do have some brochures and pamphlets here. But we're a huge supporter of local businesses, you know? So we do look to always shop local and support you guys as much as we're hoping that your families are gonna have a resource in us. Last but not least, I also want to let you guys know that we're hiring. We are hiring on so many fronts. If you are someone who has no experience but enjoys working with children, then we are hiring for behavior technicians. They earn about $14 to $20 an hour to start, based on experience. We are also hiring for VCPAs. That is what I am. I'm a board certified behavior analyst, and I have an MA in clinical psychology. Our starting salary is 70K. I know it's a little bit above average for what we do. So hopefully that will draw people in. I'm also looking to hire PBHPs, BTLAs. Trust me, if you are one, you'll know what that means. But if you know anybody who's in need of jobs or a family that's struggling, please just put the word out. Word of mouth is the best thing ever. And we're local for a very rural community. I know we have a lot of people that was from Algonquin coming all the way up to Fort Gracia. So we're hoping this will help. Thanks much.
Where are you located again?
439 South Parker Street.
Which is where?
Which is right down the street, about two buildings past the playstation.
That's what I want to know.
Yep.
We don't have a sign up, but we should next week. That might be easier.
Anyone else? Public comment?
Go ahead. Rosely Squires, 211 Michigan, Mayor of Glendale, Kansas. I just wanted... I'm saying this personally, not talking on behalf of anyone, but I'm an old news girl for part of the old newsboys, Marine City old newsboys and old news girls. And actually, I delivered papers at one point in my life, so I'm actually an old news girl. Anyway, we had a successful year this year. And I just really want to thank the community for their generosity towards us. You know, our slogan is, um... "No Child Forgotten," I believe it is. I think some other slogans are "No Child Left Behind," but ours is "No Child Forgotten." And, um, you know, we certainly don't want to forget our children at Christmas time. I thought... I know because of COVID, some of our things have changed, but this year's schedule, and it's pretty solid, will be on the 2nd of December, we'll be having our paper sales. And on the next weekend, we'll be having our craft show. We're getting the location it used to be, but now I think it's called Harvest Time Bakery Center. And then the next weekend, we'll be giving out our vouchers, because that's what we do now. We give out a voucher that they use at my ears instead of purchasing the clothes and giving them boxes. And that's worked out much better for us and for the people receiving it. So that's a pretty solid schedule. Also, on the 9th of February, we're already doing fundraisers. We've already met this year, and we're already starting our fundraising, because it takes a lot of fundraising to keep this effort going. So on the 9th, there's an all-you-can-eat pizza for $10. And it's Wednesday... That's a Wednesday, on the 9th of February. So maybe come out, have some fun. But the biggest thing I want to say is thank you for the community, because, you know, I really see firsthand who receives this. And we do have needy people in this town, and some people are just, you know, have struggles for various reasons. And certainly, the children benefit for this, and I like to see the children benefit. So thank you so much.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Cool, blood check, 546, start here. Normally, it comes with charter violations. I'm all for letting the people decide at election time, but our mayor, unfortunately, already opened that box, so here we are. Okay, this is part of 3.11 of the charter. Neither the commission nor any member thereof shall give orders to any subordinates of the city manager. I'm going to read an email that our mayor sent to our police chief on November the 8th. "Good morning, and also to our city manager. The public comment portion of our city commission meetings is getting more and more volatile and threatening. At the last meeting, two different speakers, you profanity, there was a small child in the audience, and Alan Ritchie left the podium in the area and approached the diner to shake my hand and make a bet. I told him to get away from me. I should have be able to have him and had him remove the meeting, but who will enforce this? I'm requesting police presence at all of our meetings. In my opinion, Chief Highslop as department manager, you should attend all meetings and witness firsthand who the bullies are and what type of things are being said. You should be talking to these people after the meeting when their public opinion crosses the line, becomes vulgar and threatening. That is your job. Also, during a peaceful protest that took place at the Little Bar last Saturday, October 30th, I sent a text to you, Chief Highslop, at 4:28 PM, stating that a protester, Mike Hillfrank, walked in my parking lot hearing a protest sign. I also asked the patrol car be sent to the CVS parking lot as there were two white vehicles blocking the parking lot, making it difficult for my employees and customers to park. This was intimidating my employees and customers since the drivers of those vehicles sat in their cars for over two hours. I did not get any response today from you, Chief Highslop, and nothing was done with those cars blocking the lot. I know it's not my property, but I'm light... But I would think a police officer could have asked them to move out of the aisle. I don't expect preferential treatment, but I'm a resident, taxpayer, and business owner as well. You know I was upset about this peaceful protest at my business and did nothing to inform me or reassure that the place would be available and watch nothing. The credibility and healthfulness of our police department is in question. Putting it bluntly, I do not like what I'm seeing and hearing. I'm very disappointed in you, Chief Highslop, and most of our sworn officers. I expect a written response." All right, number one, Mayor Verkaman. 3.11 of the charter. You can't give directives to a subordinate of the city manager. It states it very clearly in our city charter. You go online, pull it, 3.11, right here. You strong Commissioner Hendrick up and tried to get her removed from office for charter violation, and then you turn around and violate 3.11? Like I said, I'm all for letting the people decide at elections, but I was pushing that before you had the hinder hearing, and you went ahead and had the hinder hearing. So now, here we are. You opened Pandora's box. So if you're gonna go ahead and constrain one commissioner for charter violations, why can't we come after you for charter violations? Because you cannot give a directive to our police chief. It's not your job. It's not your responsibility. That is how we, Tatman's responsibility as the city manager. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Reading the chapter 315 Westminster, by a citizen. I'm going to write, quote, tell what that young man said. I really don't know where to start. I received a copy of this email that this mayor sent to the manager, the department head, and to the city manager. It was pretty shocking, he said, that we... In it, she expresses her disappointment and the chief on his job performance. Let me just deal with that part. When is it okay for a sitting elected official allowed to address performance issues with any department head? I thought we have a weak mayor system. That's why we hired a city manager to manage the daily operations of the city. She goes on to express her expectations in great detail. Inappropriate, absolutely unacceptable for any mayor. That is now within her job description. There's a part in this email that is so unsettling. This mayor goes on to describe the citizens, those of you who are sitting here, that come up to the podium as bullies. Her paranoia is clearly visible when she states that the situation in the meetings are becoming volatile and threatening. This kind of language is reckless and dangerous when it's used to describe our citizens. Passion expression does not constitute volatility, threatened behavior, madam mayor. Profanity, while it is unacceptable, cannot be policed because it is protected under First Amendment in our Constitution. This email must be investigated and looked at by this entire commission. It is frightening and dangerous for our community that our mayor looks upon its citizens in this manner. Okay, so here we are, where it gets very serious and must be addressed. Because that's not all. She expects Chief Hessler to impinge on citizens' civil rights by instructing him on what he should do, quote, "You should be talking to these people after the meeting, after public opinion." You've gotta be kidding me. You can't make this stuff up. It's in black and white, written by this mayor. "Commissioners, your duty bound to investigate this email. A precedent has been set by you, the commission. You have a rogue mayor who is executing the powers of her office in a manner inconsistent with the city charter. In a manner that this commission invests time, energy, and the people's money in a failed attempt to oust Commissioner Henry, it now must execute the same procedure for this mayor. Nothing short of what was conducted in November of last year must be executed. If anything, at the least, she has earned essential by this governing body and a strict warning that such behavior will not be tolerated." Now, let's just make this remark for the chief, for the record. I have not contacted him, nor has he contacted me about this. This came to me and the community. So if you get any backlash, Chief, you see me, and I would be in support of him. I think this is wrong. I think it's going way over out of bounds. We don't need any police presence in every meeting. We never have. I'm hoping that today, tonight, somebody makes a motion, one of you up here who's elected, to at least investigate what this mayor has done. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, moving in. Can I have a motion to approve the city commission meeting minutes of December 16th, 2021?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion, support. Any discussion? December 16th? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Can I have a motion to approve the city commission closed session meeting minutes of December 16th, 2021?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nope, there's no discussion. Opposed? All right. Consent agenda. We've got the 2022 budget schedule. We've got departmental activity reports. The Marine City Area Fire Authority run report for December. We've got the Marine City Area Fire Authority annual report for 2021. Planning commission meeting minutes of November 8th, 2021. The sewer rate computation for Cochavale Township. The year ended June 30th, 2021. The sewer rate computation estimate for Cochavale Township. Year ended June 30th, 2022. We have a special event, the Fire Ice and Spice, which is... I just want to advertise that real quick. Hang on one second. Where is it in my packet? What's the date on that?
It's February 3rd.
February 3rd?
I think, yeah.
Isn't it February... It's a Saturday, right?
It's a Saturday, whatever the first Saturday is on Friday.
Sorry, it's right here. Yep, February...
5th.
5th. Saturday, February 5th. It's from 2:00 to 7:00. It takes place at 300 Broadway. You see the skating rink is set up already. So there's gonna be raffles, fire performers, and they're gonna work... That's the reason why it's starting at 2:00. From 2:00 to 7:00 is because they want it darker for the fire performers, and there's gonna be a chili cook-off and all kinds of stuff. So that event is happening Saturday, February 5th. We also have another special event, the Maritime Days. This is just the approval of the date only. And they're looking at Maritime Festival for August 5th through Sunday, August 7th, 2022, on Water Street. And we also have another special event, the Maritime Days Music in the Park. And we... Oh, here it is. We've got a bunch of dates, in May, June, July, August, September, and they're taking place at Drake Memorial Park. So those are some events coming up. And can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through J.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yep.
Motion carries.
Financial business. We have expenditures, including payroll of $594,023.86. Can I have a motion to approve expenditures?
I make a motion to approve expenditures, including payroll for $594,023.86.
Support.
Any questions?
Yes, I've got one on page 12 or 13. I see we did a Six Rivers Land Conservancy for $20,000. Did that need to come here first, or...?
That was... From my understanding with the way that it was all worked and the agreement that was with Six Rivers originally, that was already approved by you for the initial expenditure.
Did we ever get the... They did estimates on those properties. I don't know if I ever saw what the... What they appraised them at.
I don't have that, but I can certainly go back and ask them for it.
Okay, there's that one. And the only other thing I saw in here that I thought was kind of odd is that the mayor purchased $244 in office supplies. Is there anything peculiar for that?
That was used in the parades.
Okay.
We use those to hand out to the kids in the parades.
Oh, but you listed it as office supplies. Okay.
Because it was Marines... It was pencils that said Marine City on it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Any other questions? All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
No.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Going down to financial business, be preliminary financial statements. I just need a motion to receive and file.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion about the preliminary financial statements? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to special presentation. This is the audit from McBride &amp; Manley. We gotta pull out the AV cart. It looks promising. There we go.
I didn't bring it back with me. Went to sleep. I'm sorry. Got it?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Curtis McBride, and I'm a CPA for McBride &amp; Manley Company. We are the firm that audits the city region's financial statements. I'm a partner for our firm. I'm also our firm's governmental accounting audit director. I've been with our firm for just over 21 years. With me this evening is Samantha Hudson. She is the audit manager for this engagement. She's been with our firm for about 13 years now. So we both have a lot of experience on the city level. Like I said, I'm here to present the results of the 2/30/2021 audit. In addition to the monitor, you also have a hard copy of my presentation. Now, before I go into the slides, I want to actually talk about the financial statements. Specifically, the audit opinions. So there are three types of opinions you can receive from your auditor. The first type of opinion is what we call an unmodified audit opinion, which means that we believe the financial statements are fairly stated and they're in compliance with generally accepted common principles. Then there's what we call a qualified opinion, which means that for the most part, they're in compliance, but there may be a few exceptions. And then the last type of opinion is what we call an adverse audit opinion, which means we do not believe the financial statements are reliable and they're not in compliance with that. So I do want to announce first that for the period ending June 30, 2021, the city did receive an unmodified audit opinion. So I want to clarify a couple of things, what that really means. Number one, we're not providing an opinion on the financial health of the city. That's not the primary focus of the audit. And number two, you can still receive an unmodified audit opinion and have audit findings, or internal control findings, is what we call them. And you did have some of those during the year. And I'll discuss those in a little bit more detail at the end of my slides. Moving on to the slides. The first fund I want to talk about is the general fund. Now, the general fund primarily derives its revenues from property taxes, state shared revenues, and federal, state, and local grants. So here, we're looking at the balance sheet of the general fund at the end of this fiscal year. You can see you had about $2,250,000, the total assets at the end of the end of the year, with about $216,000 of liabilities and obligations against those assets. So you finished the year with an ending fund balance level of about $2,034,000. Now, the Michigan Department of Treasury recommends that at a minimum, your fund balance level be at about 10% of your annual expenditures. So at the end of June 30, 2021, yours was at about 64% of annual expenditures. So in our opinion, you had a solid fund balance level in your general fund at the end of June 30, 2021. Now, on the next slide, here, we're looking at the income statement for the general fund for the audit year, comparing 2021 to 2020. You can see in 2020, you generated about $2,765,000 of revenues. You generated about $3,110,000 in 2021. I'll talk about the differences in a subsequent slide, explaining the increases. And then looking at expenditures, which is cut off a little bit on the screen, but if you look at your paper, you spent about $2,593,000 in 2020 and about $3,195,000 in 2021. You did have some increases in 2021 because construction of City Hall was in that budget year. So you spent about $445,000 for that during 2021. And you also spent about $85,000 on the streetlight LED conversion that was in the 2020... 2021 budget. So you can see you generated about $3,110,000 during '21. You spent about $3,195,000. So you actually used up about $184,000 of your fund balance level during 2021. But that was planned for construction of City Hall. Now, on the next slide, here, we're looking at general fund revenues specifically, again, comparing these two years. As I mentioned, you can see general fund revenue did go up from $2,765,000 to $3,110,000 in '21. You can see property taxes did go up slightly, from $1,728,000 to $1,786,000. That's not because property tax rates increased. It's because taxable values throughout the city increased from '20 to '21. You can see state revenue sharing did also increase, and that other went up. So within that other category are various grants that you receive during the year. So you did receive some COVID grants. You received about $27,000 in CARES Act funds, another $9,000 for the first responder hazard pay. You received... You received, part of the Christopher Reed grant was also in the 2020, 2021 budget year. You did receive some part-bench donations during the 2021 year. So those things really explain the difference in revenues from 2020, 2021 in general. Now, on the next slide, again, comparing 2021 to 2020 for general fund expenditures. As I mentioned, you can see expenditures did go up. You spent about $2,593,000 in '20. And you spent about $3,195,000 in 2021. You can see a couple of areas that did go up. You can see payroll taxes and benefits went from $460,000 to $590,000. That's because, if you recall, those of you that were here last year, you did have your annual required contribution to your pension and retirements help did increase from 2020 to 2021. And of course, the big category here that did go up is capital outlay. That was the construction of City Hall plus the streetlights LED converting. So those two categories really explain the increase in expenditure between 2020 and 2021. Now, I do have a couple of slides here where I talk about, we'll go over some trend analysis. Here, we're looking at the 10-year historical property tax revenue trend. So these go right into the general fund. Going back to 2012, you can see you generated about $1,611,000 in property taxes that year. It did go down through 2015, under $1.5 million. And then you can see really, for the most part, from that, from that year, a positive upward trend in property tax revenues. Again, not because property tax rates increased, but because taxable values have increased since that time. Now, the interesting thing to note about this is if we actually took this back further to 2008, for instance, the city actually generated about $2,029,000 in property taxes in 2008. So even though you see property tax revenue increasing, you actually generated about $243,000 less in property taxes during 2021 than you did back in 2008. And that's because of some of the limitations placed on property taxes, such as Proposal A, which limits property tax growth to any kind of individual properties, and the Henry Amendment, which actually limits growth to, for the city as a whole. So if you recall, back in 2009 and 2010, property values dropped sharply in a very short period of time. Taxable values followed suit, property taxes followed suit. And because of those caps placed on the increases in property taxes, it's taking a long time for the city to climb back out of that hole that was created in 2009 and 2010. So that's why you're generating less property taxes now than you were back in 2008. Now, the next slide here, we're looking at the 10-year historical fund balance trend for general. Again, going back to 2012. You can see at the end of 2012, you had about $724,000 in fund balance. That number jumped up over $1 million through 2016. Over $2 million through 2019. You finished 2020 at about $2,218,000. And then, as I mentioned in a previous slide, you've used up some of your fund balance level during 2021 to end the year with an ending fund balance level of about $2,034,000. Now, the next two funds I want to talk about briefly are street funds. So here, we're looking at major and local streets. These are quite a bit different than in general. These are what we call special revenue funds. We call them special revenue funds because their fund balances are actually restricted for a special purpose. And that's for the maintenance and construction of city streets. In other words, they can't be used for general operating purposes. And these, these funds are primarily funded through distributions from Michigan Department of Transportation. So here, we're looking at the balance sheet, starting with the local street fund. You can see you had about $469,000 of assets on hand at the end of the year. You had about $6,000 of liabilities against those assets to finish the year with an ending fund balance level of about $463,000. Looking at major streets, you can see you had about $968,000 in total assets on hand, $34,000 of liabilities against those assets to finish the year with an ending fund balance level of about $934,000. And for both of these funds, the fund balance levels were actually more than 100% of the annual expenditures. So again, similar to general, both of these funds did end the year with solid fund balance levels. The next slide is the income statement for these two funds. Again, starting with local street. You can see local street generated about $370,000 of revenues. It spent about $268,000 and it had an increase to its fund balance level of about $102,000. Major streets generated $440,000. You spent $311,000 in major streets and had an increase of about $129,000 to its fund balance level. Now, you notice one major category in these funds is transfers to and transfers from. Public Act 51 of 1951, which controls the use of these funds, allows you to, to take 50% of the funds that's distributed to major streets and transfer it over to local streets. So you're actually allowed to transfer some major street fund over to local streets. And you did do that during the 2020, 2021 budget year. The last fund I want to talk about briefly is the water and sewer fund. This fund is unique in that this is what we call an enterprise or proprietary fund. And we call it a proprietary fund because it's accounted for like a for-profit private business. And that's because theoretically, it's supposed to be self-sustained. In other words, the city owns the water and sewer plants, all the major equipment and the lines associated with those plants. And then it charges the users, the residents, for use of, of, of the plants. So here, we're looking at the balance sheet or the statement in that position at the end of the year. You can see you finished the year with about $7,418,000 of total assets in water and sewer. You can see a category here called capital assets. So these are the, this would be the actual water and sewer plant itself and all the major equipment associated with the plant. So, you know, these are not assets that are liquid, they're not cash, and they can't be easily converted into cash. So they're what we call non-liquid or long-term assets. You can see you had liabilities against those assets of about $3,790,000 to finish the year with an ending net position of about $4.3 million. Now, looking at liabilities, you can see some of the larger liabilities here are net OPEB. So that's your, your future anticipated retiree's healthcare liability at about $1,151,000. Your net pension liability at about $593,000. And then you can see you had other long-term debt of about $911,000. Now, what that's comprised of is you have a dwarf bond. They had about a $725,000 balance outstanding at the end of '21, and that matures in 2026. And then you also had what we call a capital lease, so a lease outstanding. They had about $186,000 balance at the end of the year, and that comes due in 2024. That's when you fully pay off. Now, the next slide, finishing this fund, this is the income statement for the water and sewer fund. You can see you generated about $1,884,000. And you spent about $1.4 million and had a net increase to your net position in water and sewer of about $484,000. Just to talk briefly about the audit process. Our audits will fund all the major accounting functions. So we just named listed some of the key ones here. Purchasing, cash receipts, utility billing, payroll's a big one. So we, we look at all of these transaction types or accounting functions, if you will. And we utilize sampling techniques which are approved by our professional standards. So purchasing is a, is a, is a key one. So we're actually pulling copies of invoices, samples of invoices, and reviewing them. Making sure they've been approved, not only internally by the city, but we're making sure that they're also at some point getting on the schedule of bills so that they're approved here at the commission level. We're reviewing them for accuracy, making sure they are purchases that are appropriate for a city. We're also looking at, you know, cash receipts, utility billing's a big one. We're actually pulling billings for water and sewer, making sure, you know, residents are being available for actual usage at rates which have been approved here at council. And payroll's a thing. We're looking at samples of time reports and, and samples of payrolls to make sure employees are being paid for time actually spent working at rates which have been approved here at council. And then, of course, we perform our year-end reconciliations in order to, you know, put together this financial statement, which, you know, is a substantial part of our audits at the onset. So that's, that's in a nutshell what we do throughout the course of our audits. I do want to talk about the audit findings for a couple of minutes because they're worth something. Yeah, it was the two letters that had various internal control findings and what we call, we call a comments and recommendations letter. So just to go over some of these, let me overview. One finding I want to discuss and get it out of the way, because we do realize it could be frustrating for our clients. So what's supposed to happen in a perfect world is when we start our audit, we come into the city and the city hands us this document. And then this is our starting point for our audit. If the city isn't able to produce this financial statement for us in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles, they automatically have an audit finding. So as you can imagine, this is a common finding for most cities. And I can tell you that, that most of our audit clients have that same finding. So that's, that's a, that's a common finding. Another one in this document and this letter is adjusting journal entries. So to have proper accounting controls, so when I say adjusting journal entries, these are adjustments to the city's accounting records that are outside the normal, what we call outside the normal accounting functions. In other words, this isn't like a purchase, this is not a cash receipt, this is not part of payroll. This is, you know, someone made a manual adjusting journal entry because maybe they had to make a correction to something. Or maybe a harmless example would be, let's say you earned interest in, in a bank account for the month for $25. The only way to report that would be to make an adjusting journal entry to the city's accounting records. So to have proper controls over accounting, adjusting journal entries, they should be kept outside of the city's accounting system, outside of the general ledger and accounted for sequentially, number one. Number two, there should be proper support attached to each adjusting journal entry to ensure appropriateness. And on top of that, there should be a second level of review over that adjusting journal entry. In other words, there should be a second person approving that adjusting journal entry outside of a person who's actually created it. So to have proper controls in place, the city should be doing that. And there was no evidence of that during the 2020, 2021 audit year. Couple of other findings in here that I think we should address. Cash receiving, we did notice that there were instances where the city had received money and it was not deposited into the bank timely. Sometimes it was days, sometimes it was weeks, in some, in some cases, it was months. A prime example would be the $44,000 check from the Brownfield Authority. It was dated in March of 2021. When we started field work for our audit, we did notice that the account for the Brownfield was approved by you in, I believe it was June of 2021. When we had started our field work in October 2021, one of the first things we did is we reached out to the bank for confirmation to make sure it was deposited, confirm the balance of the account, and they had no information for us that the account had ever been opened. So that alerted us to the fact that it was undeposited. So unless it's an unusual or rare situation, all money received, received by the city should be deposited in two to three business days without exception.
That's common practice, right?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Couple of other things to note. Let's move on to the comments and recommendations letter. We did, we were, we had trouble locating support for capital outlay purchases. So some, some of the big ones were obvious, like, you know, construction of City Hall. But many of the items posted to the general ledger for capital outlay, the support was not readily available to us. So we had to do a lot of extra digging to locate that information. We also noticed that several invoices were being paid late. Some, in some cases, being paid twice. So this became more prevalent, I would say, near the end of the fiscal year. So, you know, approaching June 30, 2021. Didn't notice too much prior to that. It became more problematic after the, the audit year, I would say. So we were noticing some of that in, in July, in August, and September of 2021. Now, the reason we know that is because one of the, one critical audit step that we perform is we look at transactions that occur subsequent to year-end. Because that provides a lot of good evidence of items that belong back in that fiscal year. So that's when we noticed that it was a little bit more prevalent. We also noticed some invoices that were being paid twice. And the reason that happened is we noticed that there were, there were no great controls in place for, I guess, for, what you should do is once you pay an invoice, there should be evidence that it's already been paid. So a real easy fix to that would have been to stamp it as paid. Or one acceptable practice would be to staple, you know, a copy of the check stub to the invoice as evidence that it was paid. And that's actually required under the Michigan, you know, accounting manual for local governments. So, you know, that, that was an issue that we found. We also found instances of, of late payments on payroll taxes. And, and those can be, you know, those, those can be pretty nasty because you, you do receive a penalty even if you make the payroll tax deposit one day late. Because we'll get penalties and interest on those, but we did see, we did find instances where that did occur throughout the year.
Curtis, do you know how many, how many, do you have a dollar figure on how much was spent on the penalties and fines for late payments?
Off the top of my head, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you, but if I had to guess, it was probably grand total less than about $2,050. But if I had to guess, it was probably in the $1,000 to $2,000 range. And another thing I wanted to bring to your attention is, I put in my, my comments, is we really feel that the, you know, the contract that the city has with Potchable Township for water and sewer needs to be reviewed again. The reason for that is, if you look, if you look at the agreement, the last time it was amended was 1991. So it's likely outdated, and it needs to be reviewed to make sure it's, you know, it's meeting the, the operating needs of both the city and, and Potchable Township. And I'm sure there are possibly elements within that contract that both parties are unaware of. You know, from our standpoint, the thing that makes us nervous is, you know, the city is getting further, further away from, from having, you know, a lot of experienced people who've been with the city for, for decades. So your auditor shouldn't be the person who's the most familiar with, with the agreement. So I really think that should be reviewed again by both, by both parties.
Any questions?
Curtis, I, I have a question because I, I want everyone to understand how, how beneficial you've been to the city. The audit was expected to be in what price range for this year?
Sure, well, we had budgeted for about $30,000.
And, and the cost is going to be?
Well, I'll backtrack on some of that. In, in a typical audit year, we spend about 290 to 300 hours on the city's audit. For 2020, 2021, we spent about $545 on the city's audit. And the reason for that is, a couple of different things. You know, number one, we, our audit is what we call a risk-based audit. So what that means is we actually spend a lot of time upfront, you know, giving the lay of the land, reviewing everything, and assessing risk to address our audit and come up with appropriate auditing procedures to address those risks. So right off the bat, you know, near the end of your fiscal year, you know, we know, we knew that you had lost a key accounting person in, in your office. You had another, your treasurer was on leave. So for several months, including near the end of the fiscal year, your accounting department was two temporary employees. In addition to that, your city manager had left right at the end of the fiscal year. And so you had two temporary employees for several months with an interim city manager. No offense, not, not, but, but there was a lot going on. So, so it was, it was naturally going. So, so it was, it was naturally going to be a risky audit at that point. And then additional information was disclosed to us on top of that, which increased our audit risk. So what that does is, what, what we have to do under our standards is we, I mentioned samples. So what that means is we also have to increase all of our sample sizes to address the additional risks involved. On top of that, because there was no treasurer here during the audit, and, and really to help us with, with many other questions, we had to spend a lot of extra time because your general ledger was, was unreconciled in some key accounts, like state shared revenues, property taxes, capital outlay. And, you know, like I said, I mentioned the lack of support for capital outlay. We had difficulty finding support for a lot of the grants. We had to reach out to third parties, the state of Michigan, to track down these grants. St. Clair County was another one. And so we had to spend a lot of extra time as a result of some of these things.
But, but the praise I'm trying to give you, Curtis, is, is that there was a price, and there's a price we're going to pay, right?
Sure.
And that's above what we thought.
That's, that's what I was going into.
Yes, okay. All right.
To put that into perspective in dollars, we spent about $81,000 of our professional funding on the audit. We had budgeted for $30,000. So we, we're not going to bill the city for $31,000. We have, you know, agreed in our firm that we, we will bill for $54,000. So we will, we will write off the excess, which is $26,000, $27,000.
That was the part I was trying to get to. Thank you for that.
Yes, we, we definitely appreciate that. Any other questions for Mr. McBride? Questions about the audit? Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. It's a lot of money. Moving on, unfinished business. We have the bridge to Bay.
Thanks, Curtis.
You're going to talk about this, the bridge to Bay?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Sure thing. All right. Where we left off on this, let me get through my audit pile here to the right documents. I put together a one-sheeter for you, kind of explaining the upcoming steps and costs associated with it. We're at the very beginning phases. We were leery about the original $10,000 grant from the St. Clair Community Foundation because there were strings attached to accepting the full $10,000. By accepting the full $10,000, you were, you were signing on the dotted line to do an M. dot grant, basically telling you, you're going to go forward with this. And if you get the M. dot grant, you better have the matching funds already planned for. We don't even know how much this is going to cost the city because we haven't done the preliminary. So I've had conversations with the community foundation, and they've agreed to let us only accept the $5,000, which would allow us to pay PCE to do the pre-engineering and get the ball rolling so we can see what we're even talking about. So that's what I would like to recommend to you tonight, is that we go forward with accepting only the $5,000, contract with PCE, get the pre-engineering done, figure out a general cost. Is this a layout we like? Get the feedback from the community and the board on what we're even looking at as a whole, and then we start taking the next steps. There is a lot of layers. There is a lot of issues that run parallel to each other that aren't even connected financially with this. So I think this is a good, safe first step that does not lock us into forking out a bunch of dough that we're not expecting.
Yeah. Is there a timeframe in which we'd lose out on the grant? I mean, that we need to have this decided by, in other words?
There's two, in my context with PCE, there's two timeframes. There's a secondary timeframe of June if we wanted to still apply for it this year. So John does think that he would be able to get us back some dollars prior to, or the, the engineering before that, so we could get a gauge on it to see if we would want to shoot for that June.
You mentioned a possible second date?
It was February.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we won't be ready for that one.
For sure.
Yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I only have a question. I, I mean, I, I like the idea of pushing forward through this, but I also, like Holly mentioned, don't want to get, sign on the dotted line before we know what we're signing up for.
Agreed.
Both cost, routing, et cetera, et cetera. So I like this balanced approach.
So you, so we would need a motion then to hire PCE for the pre-engineering $5,000 max?
Yep.
Yep. Okay.
Would it be that, or would it be to accept the $5,000 first? Yes, we need to accept the $5,000 first before we hire anybody.
Both, yes.
Okay. Go ahead. Make the, you can make them, you can make that motion.
All right. I make a motion to accept the $5,000 from the St. Clair Community Foundation for preliminary engineering of the bike path in preparation of the M. dot, app for M. dot.
Support.
Okay. We have a motion and support roll call, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Excuse me, yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving down to new business. We have a traffic control order from Marine City Area Fire Authority.
Good evening. Pursuant to your request of Chief Slankster from the Fire Authority, we request that I draft a traffic disorder before you tonight regarding parking on Union Street between Main and Market. It will prohibit parking on the south side of the street and all that Chief Slankster described his issue he had that night.
So in December, we had a fully involved structure fire on South Market Street. Our first engine come off of the bridge onto Market Street was fine. We could not make the turn getting off of Main Street onto Union Street because there's cars parked on both sides. So it took us time to back up, get straight on and be able to squeeze through there. But then we had St. Clair and Alvinette coming. And once they got parked, they had to back up to get some of their equipment out of trucks because the car was close to that intersection. Speaking with BBW, they had the same issue in Snowbound. It's a tight corner.
It is.
Not one block to have no parking on the south side.
Can we call this day before we decide, decide what?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I need the old phone line dial first.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
So you want, you want one of the sides of the street?
Well, one of the sides of the street, if we need to change the coverage in there from south side to north side pursuant to whatever Mike has to have, I'm okay with that, too.
Yeah.
Just a simple change.
Yeah, okay.
I just want to call it by graphic.
I know, wait.
Yeah. We don't either. Okay. Anybody have any questions for Chief Slankster or Chief Heslop? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion?
Yep, I need a motion.
All right.
Motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to approve that order based on the feedback from Mike Ittrich on his recommendation as to whether the north side or south side of Union Street.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carried. Clerk appointment. Holly?
Yes. So as many know, Chris is leaving us at the end of March to retire and read more books and enjoy more downtime. We're very sad about this.
We are.
But we will. We're very excited for her. So we had to put out a posting for a new clerk for the city, and we had some great candidates come in, but we have selected one that stood out to us after the interview phase. Her name is Shannon Adams. She's sitting in the back, back there by the door.
There you are.
We've put together and agreed upon a contract with the help of Bob to make sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, and agreement was made on all the conditions within the contract. And we're looking for your approval to have her start on January 31st, which would allow her to train for two solid months under Chris before she leaves, which would be a huge benefit to all of us to try to squeeze some of that knowledge out of there and go forward. So we're excited to hopefully welcome Shannon to the crew and get started.
Okay. Questions?
I have quite a few. Welcome, and don't take offense, these, this says nothing, it's just a contract. Part of the things that I've been looking at with this contract is it's totally in, not in agreement with our personnel policies and procedures, which is what everybody else gets. So my concern is if we start doing this, then every time we bring somebody in, we're going to have to try to keep track of this person gets this, and this one gets this, and this one gets this. So I kind of went through some of the things. Like employee's not entitled to do compensatory time. Well, that's a conflict with the, our rules.
What section? What's that? I'm sorry.
Yeah. What section is that? What are you looking at? So we can follow along.
Okay. So, well, let's go, let's go back up to salary. I guess we don't have any resume, so I, I don't know what qualifications this person had to know how, where to start this person. So I don't know what to do with that. But the second thing here, it says employee upon completion of each of the following training certificates shall have the annual salary automatically adjusted, and each one of these is 2,500. And then schedule without any further action by the city commission. Normally, when raises go out, the commission has always had to approve them, even when they were put in the budget. Even though they were in the budget, they still had to come through us to approve any increases. So then it says, nothing in this provision prevents the city from considering other interim pay adjustments based on annual reviews performance of the employee, which is okay to a point. But then if we're not included, we don't, how do we manage our budget when we don't know what increases are going to be given out when we're not included? So then I go down to employee status. This one, number five. So this one says the employee is not entitled to accumulate or be paid for compensatory time or for overtime. Well, other employees are. So, and it depends on if you're exempt and non-exempt and all that, but you got to look at the policies and procedures. So it's kind of in conflict with that. The need to exercise flex time to accommodate instances where she's got to work late, that I guess I don't have a problem with. Then I go to number seven. We don't, the only person we give severance payments to, that the city has ever given severance payment is the city manager. We've never done any of the department heads or any of the thing. And this person now will get three months' base salary. So all I'm looking at is, there again, this is, this is different from what we normally do. Then, let's see, number eight. This one here. Oh, so number eight, too, she only gets $1,500. Well, there's, there's a certain budget in there, so I'm not sure what, why this person only gets a certain budget when we have a allowance for professional development. So, and I would think some of the classes she's going to have to take is probably going to be more than that. What else? Oh, number 12, vacation and sick time. That, again, that's, that's totally not in agreement with our policies and procedures, which everybody else has to follow. So these are my concerns, is that in some of these cases, we should be following the policies and procedures manual, which we do for all our other employees, for this one.
Well, I think that, for starters, yes, there are some variations for this position in this contract. So our thought process when we were putting the contract together was to have a more concise contract with the salaried employees. The treasurer's position, the clerk's position, the city manager's position, your department heads. I mean, when you get into a scenario where you have salaried exempt employees, you have to be competitive. You have to be competitive with communities that can pay a salary and offer things that make somebody want to come here. I think that by having these types of opportunities in a contract with this employee gives us a leg up to have qualified candidates want to be here and want to stay. We can't compete with, you know, the Sterling Heights and the Chesterfields of the world, so we have to dangle other carrots. Asking an employee to come on and not have any vacation time or sick time for a year, that's kind of harsh. I mean, yes, we have four-day weeks, but that's kind of harsh, especially when you have a gr, a bigger community who does dangle that. The salary is very reasonable. Personally, I still think that in this line of work, for the amount of work that goes into that position, dealing with elections and all of the legalities that go into that position, I still think this is even a low salary, but it's what we can afford. We have to get with the times. You can see what people are asking for, you know, flipping burgers for hourly salaries. If we want educated, experienced employees who are going to stay with us, we have to adapt. It may not be what we've always done, but that doesn't mean that we can't change to make it what we should be doing. And that's what I'm asking for with this. By putting it into the contract and as an exempt salaried employee, yes, it does step this person outside of the HR, the policies and procedures a little bit, but so is mine because of the contract I have. I don't think there's anything wrong with that as long as you're voting on what's in it and the understanding is that this person is sort of separate from that.
The problem you run into, though, is all your other employees had to follow the policies and procedures. So I guess the point would be, why not update the policies and procedures and fix that for some of these issues?
Plan on it. Honestly, I do.
Instead of giving this person all these issues and then having a whole nother workforce out there that's pissed at us because they're getting, she's getting a good deal, and they all have to follow the policies and procedures.
Well, not necessarily, because those employees negotiate their deals through their unions.
Not all of them.
They may be getting benefits that the salaried exempt employees who work 40 hours and don't get overtime, they get comp time, a percentage of comp time. You could look at the flip side, that the union employees who negotiate a better deal are getting a better deal.
No, but you have more non-union.
So what you do, your policies and procedures, you can put in there an exempt and a non-exempt with the description of the types of perks, I guess for lack of a better term, that the salaried exempt employees get, and your non. So I do plan on updating the policies and procedures. I actually had a conversation with MERS even about it, and Denise from UHY. Ours is severely outdated in a lot of places, and it is next on the hit list.
Well, I, I tried to get it updated not long ago, but I ran into a lot of opposition here. But all I'm saying is, though, this just, it just puts us in a bad situation for a while when we're going to give all this away. And, in fact, there's a couple of things she's not getting at the, that's in the policies and procedures, and vice versa, and I'm concerned.
Can I ask what? What?
The compensatory time. Others get it, other department heads got it.
Comp time? That's what she gets for, for working over the 40 hours?
No, she said it's not entitled to accumulate or be paid any compensatory time off or overtime. That's what it says.
She gets, she gets comp time.
It's right here, it says that they can keep.
Number five.
Yeah. It's at the bottom of, number five. The employee shall keep a personal log of these issues and use the flexible hours to address these types of issues.
But look at this, this, then that conflicts with this up in the top.
Under what?
Oh, I think she's looking at it.
Employment status. Go down one, two, three, the third line towards the end. The employee is not entitled to accumulate or be paid any compensatory time off or overtime.
Paid, right. She uses that as an offset.
So it's not paid.
I'm just saying, there's a lot of conflicts with this and the, I, I just don't want to see that the rest of our employees get upset because we're changing this. And then when you do, now whoever manages this has to manage this versus what everybody else gets in the policy. else gets in the policies and procedures. It just makes it more difficult to work with for keeping track of it.
I think with the small staff and the, the few staff that would have a specialty contract because of the intricacies, I guess, of their position, I think that it's fair to think that some of these other positions with more responsibilities have a separate contract, and we negotiate something that works to employ the best candidate. I'd hate to see that we lose out on the best candidate because we're not willing to give somebody comp time, or a decent salary, or offer them a benefit of furthering their education. I think that would really severely hurt the city if we lost out on a good candidate because of something so insignificant.
So, does that mean that all our other department heads can now renegotiate their contract to do the same as this?
Our, our department heads negotiate their contracts every budget season, and which will be coming up here soon. Your union employees negotiate with their union stewards for better contracts every couple of years with their contracts. I, I think it's fair.
Yeah.
And I think it's standard.
So, so you, city, so the city manager and the city attorney, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I.
Both looked at this?
Right. And this is, this was the give and take. I just wanted to comment briefly on the part of paragraph two. The, the two milestones, we, we've seen this, or I've used it in other communities, and I've graduated a lot of people through these clerk programs. I just want you to know, those two programs, they're not overnight. They, they take, they could take about three years to get those certificates. But, I, I think it's wise that this community, it, first of all, it's hard to go out and find a clerk who's already a clerk to come here to be our clerk. So, we're, 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 we're trying to create something here in paragraph two that says, hey, you know, if you come on board and you enroll and complete the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerk Certification process, which is fairly significant, we're gonna, we're gonna make that an automatic reward. And the reason, Lisa, the language is in there is, it wasn't trying to, you have to be careful where I use the word "city" versus "city manager." So, it does come back to you, that $2,500, but what, what we were saying here is, it's not debatable that you're gonna get that $2,500. It comes back for your consent and approval, but if you, if you show us that, that milestone, then that, that, that's pretty good.
That's significant.
And that goes, that goes, Lisa, back into that $1,500 that you were talking about. The, the person, the clerk, who I've not met, but I, I see, this is something they have to undertake. This is a milestone they undertake, and the, and the $2,500 is the, is the, what would it be? It would be the carrot? The carrot? That would be the carrot of the, of the program. And then, the second one is even more, the enroll and complete master clerk, clerk certification. And then, and then you get the, the next milestone. And, and quite frankly, if, if the person stays on and has both of those certificates, we have ourselves a, a really good clerk.
A good clerk. Chris, how long did it take you? Because you, you got.
It takes five years to do that.
Yeah.
If you, it's recommended that you, you really have to go consecutively, the first three-year, because all the curriculum is based upon the previous year. So, they bring in the experts to teach you, and then the masters is too.
Yeah. Yeah. I knew it was a lot.
It's about, it's about five years total.
Yeah. That's a lot.
I'm not trying to be insensitive, but times change and contracts change. I mean, when I hired in, I got two weeks for paternity leave. You get eight weeks now, you know? I mean, it's not, it's just, it's a change. I, and people before me, got a pension secured. I, nope, 401K, that's all you get. Everything changes.
I understand that, but all I'm saying is, you should be changing the policies and procedures, not building a whole new contract.
She said she was going to. She's going to. That's our city manager's job, she's going to. Anybody else?
Yeah. I'd like to say, you know, first, for those two set annual raises, I do that in my, my job. I mean, it is very common nowadays, and it's good because it gives the employees something to shoot for, where they know they're going to get something. It's not that, it's not coming before the board, it's before the board right now, we're just preemptively authorizing it. The other thing is on number eight, for professional development, we're not saying thou shall never spend more than $1,500 a year. There is a proviso in there that says, we as a board can approve more.
Well, I understand that, but.
There is the safety valve that allows us to do that.
I understand that, but this is the maximum allowance per year, unless it comes to us.
Unless.
Will only be $1,500. Well, why have to bring that to us every year? It's all already in your policies and procedures that we have it. So, all I'm saying is, some of these things, I wouldn't put in there because it's covered under the policies and procedures instead of putting a limit. That's all I'm saying.
My, my only thing, though, is that this entices someone to hire in today, which we desperately need. If you wait till the policies and procedures are updated, it could be months. We, we need this today, and the candidate needs to know what she's getting today before she signs.
Yep. And again, we have the city manager and the city attorney, right? Two professional people that looked at this, so, anybody else?
Well, we had a resume, you had, we got a resume for our city man, and other people that we have brought in. And I'm not saying, I just, we, I haven't seen one. I'm used to seeing one in the other units when they hire in people, and I don't see any problem with it. The only thing is, I wanna know, is, is she gonna be thrown into an election that she has never done? But, I'm not sure if I heard it right, you said she was already a clerk?
No, I, I think I said, I think I said it was hard to find a clerk to come here and be the clerk. They, she will, she will receive the election training.
Well, that's hard. I've gone through a lot of towns with people.
And, and that was why we were, the timing was, we, we were trying to move on this to try to get a two-month, a two-month overlap.
To get her trained on because.
With the existing clerk.
You gotta deal with the county.
Yeah, and, and the county, you know, they, you know, for whatever, Bill, I, I agree with what you're saying, but they do give election training, right?
Yeah.
And it's not, it's not bad. It's, I'm not saying it's perfect. But she will get that election training. More importantly, she'll have some time with the clerk.
Right. And Chris is incredibly organized. She has documents, how-to, step-by-steps, that she'll have two months to work with. She and then to put this together.
How to do.
Well, like I said, I didn't see the resume, so I didn't know what she had. And I know from other units that I work in, and I've been in several of them, and when election comes along and they get a new one, we're in trouble.
Well, I can tell you that Shannon's background is legal. She comes from a law firm, and she has a great deal of experience, a great deal of knowledge. She has a Juris Doctor degree.
I just.
Don't hold, don't hold that against her.
No, I just, I was throwing her something that was like, wow, what did I, what did I get into?
It is the most difficult part of the job. It truly is.
Election, Bill, you're right. It's, that, that is the, the most difficult part, I think.
It is.
Could you provide us all with a copy of the resume? Would that be a problem? I mean, I think that's something, if we would've had that, it would've been nice, too, to be able to read about her.
I apologize, I didn't know you guys needed it. I thought this was.
We usually always get them.
Something that I did and brought her to you with the contract, so. But I will, yes, I'll happily email you all a copy of it so that you can get to know her.
Any, anybody else? Any other further discussion?
I just wanna say one more thing. And again, this is nothing. I welcome you here, I'm glad you're coming here. I, I just gotta look out for certain things, so, okay.
Anything else? Okay, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract between the City of Marine City and Shannon Adams for the position of city clerk.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
And again, I wanted it noted that I'm for her coming here. I welcome her, but I cannot approve this contract. No.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The 2022 Poverty Exemption Policy Poverty Exemption Application. Holly?
All right, this is a kind of, from what I understand of it, it is a standard boilerplate type of document that has to be updated annually when the Michigan General Poverty Tax Act updates. So, this is a resolution that the communities need to vote on to put in place, basically saying that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing and following the updated rules.
Wish they would rename it.
Could you, could this be something that we could post on our webpage for people? Because I know there is a lot of people that struggle, but if we could post this on there so they have a good, clear way to get to it, and they could review that? Thank you.
I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion, we approve the, was it the resolution to approve the annual property exemption policy and guidelines?
Poverty.
Poverty, I'm sorry.
Crazy. Support.
It is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to the Michigan Department of Transportation Performance Resolution.
You're up.
I think you're up for the rest of them, right? I told him he could go, and he weighed, he weighed me down.
He likes to hang out with us. This resolution is for my right-of-way permit from M.D.
What they're doing now, every year, we're gonna have to do this resolution. My application, I put in for my right-of-way permit, I have to turn this in with it. That's all it is. We're just trying to, all the work for everybody over here.
Well, this is mandatory. I mean, you, you, there's not a lot of discretion on this legally. This has to be done.
Has to be done. You know, if you get my right-of-way permit, yeah, I have to have this done.
Any questions for Mike?
And this is because you are doing operations or have city property within an M.D. right-of-way, right?
Right to work on my water mains and M.29, or anything that touches M.29.
You're right. Got it.
I have to get a permit.
Yeah, for the benefit of the public. Thanks.
Okay. No other questions? Thank you. I need a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make the motion to approve the Michigan Department of Transportation Performance Resolution. Support.
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
You just stay there. Get comfortable, man, get a chair.
We need a bar singer up there.
Moving on to the generator for 260 South Parker Street. Mike?
Okay, we, you know, we had a chance to get some money from St. Paul County. Dave Van Bosch did call me on this. We put a generator here, and it's like, right, the fire department. We were sort of cost us one third of $39,000. Our cost is gonna be, um.
$13,000.
$13,000 and $85.23. Fire Department already did order theirs. This is a 40-plus week, it's the way that we're ready to generate. For John, we ordered his back, and we still have that.
Oh, what?
I would like to get this thing ordered with the fire department. We don't think the budget for next year, and if it doesn't come in next year, we can go, we're following you. We have a couple of years to spend this month. So, I'm just looking for a motion to waive bidding, go sideline, so I can get this thing ordered. Get the generator in here, because we are being using this as a warming and cooling center.
And this is sufficient generator to do all that?
Yes.
Keep it running?
Yes.
They're just hard to get.
I did use a generator. I did not bring it with me, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what the part of the cost is, is we have two meters, we have two circuits coming in. We gotta combine those two circuits. That's the part of the problem. Otherwise, we need two generators, or each of the two 40 legs coming in. So, we gotta get that done, too.
A lot of times, the automatic transfer switch is almost equal to the cost of the generator itself.
Well, we did get the transfer switch from John.
That is it.
That is it. So.
It's sitting on a boat somewhere.
How's it working?
Okay, I need a motion to, we get a couple. It's a wave competitive bidding.
Yep.
Yep, wave competitive bidding first.
I'll make a motion that we waive competitive bidding for the purchase of the generator to sideline electric.
Support.
I have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now, we need a motion to purchase and install.
I'd like to make a motion to approve for the budget of $13,085, one-third of the, actually, would you like it to be for Do Not Exceed?
Pull them out, in case we get the check and then.
Okay, understood. So.
What, you can say with our portion being.
Sure. So, to approve the cost of the generator system of $39,256 in total, the city's portion of that cost being $13,085.33. Support.
Very. We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now, we're moving on to the water tower remote access. Mike?
I'm gonna sit down, come back up.
Yeah, you can go ahead and sit down, I'll call you back in.
You notice that, you know, starting July until probably October, our water tower was overfilling quite a bit. We lost communication, and we're trying to do manually, we can't do manually. So, I had Ker pump come in and put what's called C-level in there, which is giving us a somewhat of an accurate reading, but it's an app on the computer. So, we lose the internet, everything, we are down. We don't know what's in that tower. Right now, the PLCs in that tower were installed in 1998, I believe, the entire tower built, and they're very outdated. We had lifeguards for them, and we placed them. We have to go in there again. And with Ker pump doing our Phase One, like water plant right now, installing the PLC up there, this would be a perfect time to have this done in correlation with that. That's, I'm asking, to have this done.
I can say that if Ker pump is doing the water plant PLCs, it's gonna be a whole lot cheaper to have them do the water tower, tower and have them talk to one another than it's going to be to have a third party come in, figure out what Ker pump did on the PLC at the water plant, and then try to have them communicate with one another. If, you're, you're looking at probably another order of magnitude if you wanna go to a third party to do this.
If you notice, Mayor, I had, I did have High Tech and Ker pump come out in July, and tried to trace it down how it's rated, and we can figure out how it's rated to the PLC to get into the SCADA program.
Yep.
So, that's another problem that happened.
So that's another problem that happened. So now we have direct line, right to them, and read each other left and right, hopefully, it'll be great.
Did they indicate approximately how much savings it would be? I mean, well, everything Jake said is true.
If we had, if KIR pump gets a PLC up there and everything else, I have somebody else come in here, KIR pump is not going to give them the addresses and anything else in that PLC.
Yeah.
So these guys are going to spend days out there trying to find all the addresses, and we're going to be charged for it. So probably, probably looking to find the type of grant more. Jake, you know that?
Yeah, it's, weeding through PLC code is not fun.
I don't do it, but I'll learn.
Any other questions for Mike? All right, I need a motion to waive competitive bidding.
I'll make a motion. We waive competitive bidding for the installation of the PLC on the water tower for KIR pump. Support?
Support?
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yep, yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now I need a motion to approve it. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote of nine thousand five hundred and fifty dollars to have KIR pump install the water tower PLC system.
Support?
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And moving on to the programmable logic controller at the wastewater treatment plant, the upgrade. Mike?
PLC.
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 I know, but nobody knows what that means, so that's why...
PLC at the wastewater plant was installed roughly nineteen ninety-four. In order to us going into the program to set the values for our alarms, we have to have somebody come in with a computer that still has the pop-up system. Not case one minute. So, I mean, it's old and it's time to get this thing going and we're going to have to have a lot of upgrades at that water plant over the next couple of years, and this is going to be one of the major ones, pretty good. I reached out to companies and I got two quotes back. A lot of companies are stressed for workers right now, don't understand. But looking after the juniors team, I think that U.I.S. and Dexter is offering a lot more than KIR pump is, a lot less. I think we go with U.I.S. on this one and ask them for a budget, I think of eight thousand, eighty thousand dollars not to exceed, in case we run into any problems, because this is a very old system down there. They're replacing their, whether or not the control panel and going into the substation building to replace the old one also. We don't know what we're going to find will be.
If CARE is doing the water tower, though, wouldn't we want U.I.S. SCADA to do the water tower also?
No, no. Wastewater, water plant, fully fitted.
Oh, sorry.
They don't talk to one another.
Who do they run into?
Sorry.
That's a good thing.
No, that's probably good.
As far away as possible.
Any other questions for Mike?
Are the PLCs they selected for the wastewater plant, are those the same, I know they're still Allen Bradley, are they the same units or the same processor per se, the same family?
The same family. If someday if we wanted to tie high-tech, they would still be able to generate workers at the water plant, sewer plant, sewer plant for water plant, the same, yes, it's the same.
Okay, and then I completely support the not to exceed, because I mean, it's, you're going to be tying in with old sensors that may or may not play nice with the new technology. I mean, you...
Well, my biggest, my biggest scare is my phone meters. I do have in the budget to replace them this year, but again, I get somebody down here to do them.
Yep.
That's my biggest scare, because once they get the same, if my phone meters aren't going to communicate with this...
Yeah.
I can't see the move, I'm walking.
Anything else? If not, I need a motion to waive competitive bidding.
I'll make a motion. We waive competitive bidding for the installation of the PLC at the wastewater treatment plant for U.I.S. SCADA.
Support?
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now I need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the PLC installation at the wastewater treatment plant not to exceed eighty thousand dollars by the firm U.I.S. SCADA.
Support?
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yep.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yep.
Motion carries.
All right, we don't have any items removed from the consented, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Last week, we had a casualty at the museum. Fergus went out and we had to replace it. So that was roughly fifty-two hundred dollars. The heat exchanger cracked on it. It was not stable, and that furnace was installed in nineteen ninety-six. So just to let you know that that happened there. The second thing is, we had a really bad vibration in one of my low-service lift pumps at the water plant. I've had a couple of people out there looking at them, Detroit pump. Again, so provider, I'm thinking, I can't, nobody else to look at it because the jury pump installed it. Repair it is roughly, repair it is thirteen thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars, and to install a new one is sixteen thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars. I would try to get somebody else to bid on this. I can't guarantee it, but I'll bring it back to the next Michigan meeting for you. Okay?
Thank you.
I'll make it where it is. If this pump does go down, we're going to have to do it.
Yep.
Yeah, that's bad.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need an approval for the furnace?
No.
No.
Okay.
And city manager's report. Holly? You got a good one here.
It's a long one.
It's a two-bager.
It's very busy. We've had a lot going on, finalizing, reviewing the audit information with McBride, and just wanted to say thank you to his team for everything that they did, the above and beyond, especially with me being a rookie here in Marine City. They helped teach me some things too that I didn't know about the budget yet, so I'm happy working with them very much, though. I have worked on, because of some of the audit findings that Curtis described, we did receive a corrective action plan from the State of Michigan Department of Treasury that I am working on to send back. I have to have it back by the end of this month. I'm waiting, my portion of it is done, which is all of the responses to all of the different internal findings, which you guys all were provided a document, so you know what they all are. I'm just waiting on the final piece, which is the bank reconciliations from U.H.Y. They are through October, and we're trying to get them through December by Monday. So we can send that off with the corrective action plan and then therefore make the Treasury Department happy. So, where did I leave off? Other than that, I am working with U.H.Y. quite a bit on things. We kind of have a tag team system where they're doing most of the backend work. I'm doing all the bank transfers and daily banking, signing off on things. Chris and I are still handling the checks. Anne Marie as the admin is knocking things out left and right with our revenue and expenditures. But we do have a really good working system right now with U.H.Y., and they're finding some things that maybe don't make sense, that we want to look at changing for our, you know, our incoming treasurer when we find one of them, to help maybe change some of the policies and procedures to make things make a little bit more sense and get us more in line with compliance and some of the things that McBride's team found. So that's been working well. The Six Rivers, Lisa brought up, the check that we had written, that first acquisition of property happened in December. So the first piece of property has been purchased from the Cotrell family. So that first piece is done, and that's why we had to fork out our first hunk of dough on that. We'll see more happen in the upcoming months. Six Rivers is going to maintain that property, handle the tenants, and then we will work on putting a lease agreement together for how we kind of transition and take that over. You know, there's light bills, there's water bills, how are things going to start going? So that process is continuing, and then we should get the acquisition of the second piece of property towards the end of 2022, finalize the transfers, and the city actually own the property outright by the end of 2022. So Six Rivers will be operating the Marina with the current tenants that had already contracted with the Cotrell family this year. So there will not be public docking for Marine City or residents or transient boaters this year. That will officially start next year. We worked on the clerk position and got that squared away luckily. Thank you for supporting our candidate. I've been navigating a lot of the healthcare system. We've had, unfortunately, people pass away. We've had people come on, they've hit sixty-five, so I've been learning a lot about that and playing the HR role as well with navigating that stuff and making sure people get everything that they need to get in the systems that they need. I've been doing a lot with the building and code enforcer regarding blight. We're going to try to be more proactive instead of reactive. I am kind of a stickler for blight. It affects everybody's property taxes. It affects everything, your entrance into the town, the rapport, it affects everything, and we've been on more of a complaint base. If you get a complaint, then they go deal with it, and I don't like that. I think that we need to be more proactive. So they are, they broke the town up into quadrants. They're driving the quadrants weekly so that they are becoming familiar with our problem childs, what's changing, what people are trying to sneak in. We are looking at the ordinances for how we can be more specific. We are going to take a look at the fee schedule and see how we can kind of maybe jack up our fees a little bit to be more consistent and aggressive in forcing the hand of these people to make the changes to help the community. So that's a big one that we have started the ball rolling on. It's going to take some time, but I think it will be a big benefit to the city when we're done. A lot of miscellaneous stuff, just, you know, keeping, keeping things on the rails, meetings, like I said, the banking stuff, different meetings that I've been having with economic development, the county, working on the upcoming budget, getting things squared away with U.H.Y. so that we can be on track with the budget schedule that you've seen and get that ball rolling so that the right phases are happening with the departments, your review suggestions are coming in. I'm researching some stuff on the pension board to become more specific or more educated on some of the things that you guys have done in the past, what we have in place now. I've been fielding some questions from some of the trustees with concerns over some of it, so I'm trying to learn that a little bit better, working on a lease with the Little League, and more. And more. So there's, it's just been very busy. There is one thing that I do want to add that is not on here. We have concluded some of the steps in our recent issue with our former treasurer. Our stuff has all been turned in, so that chapter of that is closed. I do want to make you aware, though, that when all of the documents and everything was returned back to the city, that we did find a check in there for sixty-five hundred dollars from the U.S. Treasury that had been uncashed from back in August. So you will see that as a deposit now. Anne Marie worked with Curtis on how to log that properly because it was from August, and now we're logging it in 2022. So, just so you know, that there will be a random deposit of that check.
That's a chunk of change.
Yeah. That's all I have. If you have any questions?
I have...
I don't know, we've got lots going on.
I have one thing, and I need a memory refresher, more than everyone here, is I know everything was mildly in limbo with Elaine leaving, now Holly's here. Do we need to start the process of the resolution for goals and priorities for the city manager here?
Yes.
Yes.
So when do we want to do that?
Well, according to your, the way we set it up, we do it at, twice a year, June, and then we had a stage at the end of the year. So I would think that we would start working on that March, April, so that...
I couldn't remember if we were doing it on the fiscal year or the calendar year.
No, no, we, yeah. So we have talked about that and we will, we will start that process.
Okay.
Mike, keep me up.
No, no, no. I'll be up for a long time.
She'll be up for a long, long time. Any other questions for city manager?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Here on your code enforcement, I think you, code enforcement officer has called me a couple of times. I'm not happy with that. We solve our own problems in the township. We've worked on stuff and we are working on. For him to call me and tell me that it's not being done, or did you see this in your project? We have, in Cotterville Township, a lot of pieces that are sticking out into the city. He called me one time and said, well, there's a trailer at the end of Roberts, Robbins Road, and it's been there for years. We've wrote violations, we've done everything else, but you get to the point where, what happens? If your council will not pay to go to court, that's where it ends.
Right.
I know that Jim did approach me on it. Jim did not realize that some of those little fingers cutting in, he was out driving the quadrants like I had asked him to do. He wrote down some of the addresses. He came back to the city, pulled them up in the system, and that's how he found out they were actually Cotterville addresses. He asked me, or he told me that he was going to reach out to you just to give you a heads up if you hadn't been in it. It was a courtesy. It was nothing more than just that.
Anytime you hit a dirt road in the city, it's Cotterville.
All right, good to know.
That makes it easier.
Any other questions for city manager?
Yeah, I had one quick, oh, sorry, at least. Anyway, really quick, just who's getting the proceeds from the dockage then, for the Marina? Do we get that, or does...
No, no. That is still under the Cotrell deal that they had with Six Rivers. It's one of them.
Okay.
Because they had made the agreement that they would leave their tenants for this year.
Sure.
Because we wouldn't have the money officially through the grant system to pay for it, to get it ourselves, so they kept the deal between the two of them and didn't want to bog us down in it.
Is that with the house?
No, the boat well.
The wells, the boat wells.
The boat wells.
Because the house...
The house still has the tenants, and the Cottrills are taking care of their tenants until they move out. I believe they've been given a date, or if they haven't, they're getting the date, and they will continue to maintain the home, provide services and maintenance to those tenants until they are out, so they will continue to receive that rent money.
I know at our meeting when that house was going to be demolished, boom, promised that he'd get us the money to demo that.
The demolition money.
Yes.
Yes.
Have you heard anything?
He's still telling me that he's got the money to make sure that gets demoed and it's done right away. But we, according to the agreement with the banks originally, the city needed to own it to be able to get our hands on the money for the demo. They have since wavered on that a little bit, so depending on when the tenants get out, we may be able to work a deal with Six Rivers and do the demo prior to us actually officially signing, but details we can work out.
Okay, so have we done a rental inspection on it?
We haven't done anything in there because technically Six Rivers owns the lease to that home right now, so...
It's not in our name yet.
No. We don't want it. We don't want the tenant.
Yeah, we've done everything.
That was part of the deal.
We've done everything we can to try not to be a heavy-handed with these tenants. It's been a very courteous process to keep, you know, we didn't come on real strong. We've given every deference we can give, we've given to these tenants.
I just want to make sure that we don't get sued by the tenant for something.
No, I don't think so.
We're being very careful with that.
Okay.
Anything else for city manager?
Last question. I know Mr. Clausen brought it up when we hired U.H.Y. Are we ever going to get a report so we know what's going on, or...
So that, speaking to what I had talked about at the top of my list, they want to get the banks reconciled through December, which will provide them with an accurate budget. If the bank accounts aren't reconciled, they're not confident in their numbers they're giving you. They don't want to give you a report that's inaccurate. So once the bank reconciliations are concluded and they know everything matches up and the transfers were done properly and the accounts have in them what they're supposed to have in them, you will get an accurate report.
Anything else?
I just wanted to tell you that the township, the city had, years ago, had gone in that area and tried to get it annexed into the city or vice versa, and it had... and tried to get it annexed into the city or vice versa, and it has to go to a voter people, and they don't want to say pay city taxes. So it dies. It's a hard thing to get that property into the city or, you know, get it squared back off.
Anything else? All right, the city commissioner will now enter into a closed session to discuss...
Commissioner Privilege.
Oh, I'm very sorry. See, I was just trying to be efficient and quick. Hang on one second. Let me grab my... All right. Commissioner Privilege. Commissioner Bryson.
I have nothing tonight.
Commissioner Ross.
Nothing for me.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Nothing.
Oops. Commissioner Hendrick.
Nothing for me either.
Commissioner Clausen.
They canceled the planning commission meeting, so we didn't have one, so that's it.
Commissioner Callahan.
Nothing for me tonight.
See?
This is the first.
Here we go. All right, now, the city commissioner will enter into a closed session to consider the dismissal, suspension, or disciplining of or to hear complaints or charges brought against or to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of a public officer or employee. MCL one five dash two six eight A. There may or may not be any action taken upon returning to open session. I need a motion to enter into closed session.
So moved.
Support. Motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carries.